Good evening and welcome to the regularly scheduled school board meeting for the Carson City School District. We will begin with Agenda Item 1, a flag salute by Stacy Wilkie-McCoa.
Please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation and under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll move on to Agenda Item 2, adoption of the agenda as submitted for possible action.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion by trustee Swirzik and seconded by?
Cassie.
Okay, they're both claiming each other, so I'll do Ryan and trustee Green. Do we have any further discussion, any public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Go ahead and move on to Agenda Item 3, superintendent's report for information only. Mr. Stokes.
Thank you President Crossman, members of the board. I have just a brief report for you this evening, just did come from the Jobs for Americans graduates, which is a program at Pioneer High School and a great-looking group of youth over there going through their installation and installment ceremony. They had the state executive officer in presence there and it was delightful, it was really good. I did learn tonight based on information that was presented at the ceremony that last year 100% of the JAG members graduated from high school. So this is truly a good program and one that we should endorse and get behind as much as we can. And also, just before coming to the board meeting this evening, I heard from the State Department of Education where we were notified that our Read by Grade 3 grant was approved and will receive the entire amount, which was 1.4, sorry, 1 point, we asked for 1.4 million dollars and about $100,000 less than that we were actually approved for. So we'll be able to put into practice the programs that we have applied for mostly and we look forward to going through that program in greater detail and finding out what parts were taken away. But other than that, we're kind of in that grant-seeking and grant-learning program and we look forward to what comes next from the Department of Ed. So that's my report.
Thank you very much and congratulations on the grant. That's great work by the grant-writing department. We'll go ahead and move on to Agenda Item 4, board reports and board member comments for information only. Let's begin with Siana Fletcher from Pioneer High School.
Thank you, members of the board. PHS staff and students would like to congratulate all the new JAG officers being inducted tonight at the JAG I-N-I ceremony at the Governor's Mansion. There will be a project discovery day at Mount Rose on Thursday, October 11th. Please turn in your permission slips to Ms. Corley. Photo retakes will be done on Friday, October 12th. On Friday, October 20th, Mr. Laurin will be taking students to Rocksport. The sign-up form is outside his room, A5. Also on Friday, October 20th, leadership is sponsoring the Fright Night Costume Dance. Dress up in costume to play games and win prizes. Tickets may be purchased at the main office for $2. Thank you, and this concludes the activities, events, and announcements for Pioneer High School.
Thank you, Siana. We don't have a representative from Carson High, so we'll go ahead and go with trustee Karini.
For Seliger Elementary, this is it, Saturday, the pumpkin patch. It's finally here. 9:00 to 3:00, come out and get your pumpkin, fun for the whole family. Also at Seliger, October 24th through the 26th, parent-teacher conferences. There'll be a 12:40 dismissal those days. And for Carson Middle School Band Program, October 25th, Wednesday, 6:00 to 7:30, in the All Purpose Room is their first band concert of the year, all of their ensembles. Thanks.
Thank you. Trustee Cassioppo.
Hi. For Carson High School, just a couple of quick things. Tomorrow, Wednesday, October 11th, at 1:15, Sierra Nevada College is going to have a representative for any students interested in learning about college, learning about Sierra Nevada College, and you can get, it's at 1:15, you can get a pass from the guidance office. Last week, I had a chance to attend Junior Night at the high school. They did Freshman Night, Sophomore Night, Junior and Senior Night, and really good information. I thought, you know, I thought last year's was pretty good, I thought this year's was even better. I thought it was very well organized, a lot of good information about college, about AP classes, Jump Start, and, you know, you can tell that the longer we do all this stuff, you know, Jump Start, seeing how it's the newest, we're kind of getting our feet under us and anyway, good amount of information. Today, I had a chance to meet Sarah Lopsinger and Jennifer Chandler, here actually, for their EDU 110 class, and that's for students who are interested in a career in education. So we came here and they asked me to talk to them a little bit about what the school board does. So they came in and it was almost like I planned it that way. We had enough chairs for them all to sit up here and on both sides, and I stood at the podium and just chatted with them. We talked about what the school board does, some of the issues, you know, that get thrust upon us and how we work with everybody to work it out. And I think trustee Green's going to be getting together with the same group here pretty soon and, you know, talking about some of the same stuff, having them debate some topics and so anyway, they put together a nice program and it was enjoyable, you know, to be a part of that. So that concludes my report.
Thanks for doing that. Trustee Swirzik.
Nothing tonight.
Trustee Wilkie.
Pardon my absence from the last school boarding. I was at the NIAA meeting down in Vegas and didn't want to fly back, but I did watch it in my pajamas at the hotel room. So thank you Carson TV for telecasting our meetings for those people who don't want to come and sit here for four or five hours. I also attended Clark County School Board meeting, which made ours look so nice, and I stayed until 8:00 because then they were going into their budget, and their budget lasted until midnight, so I was really glad I didn't go. And they had 350 people in public comment. So anytime you think these meetings are going long, they're not. Then in Mark Twain, we have, next Monday is the PTO meeting in the library at 5:30. October 24th is the pizza night at the Pizza Factory and all those, they have parts of the proceeds will go to Mark Twain. And then November 3rd, Dads &amp; Donuts is at 7:00 AM in the cafeteria. And then at the NASB meeting, we went over basically the conference stuff, Dottie's evaluation, and talking about, there is an opening for the legislative chair. If anybody's interested, let us know because that'll be decided at the November meeting. It's probably an easy one because the legislature's not in session, but it's not hard for us because we're here in Carson, so you could do it next year if you're not up to it. And the conferences, as you know, next month, your hotel reservations, if you're going to stay at the Atlantis, is October 14th. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Trustee Green. Okay. For Fritsch Elementary, they'd like to thank the PTA for hosting Dudes &amp; Donuts. Last Friday, my dudes went and enjoyed donuts. Also, they had a great week of respect last week and they'd like to thank the Nevada Appeal for their coverage and the photos, and my boys swear they could see themselves in the picture, so I just trusted them. October 19th is the Flu Shot Clinic, and parent-teacher conferences are coming up the week of the 24th through 26th, and it will be minimum days for the elementary school. For Carson Middle School, last week they also did the Week of Respect and the students and staff participated in lunch activities and got their blue on on Friday. And the other big news that Carson Middle School has is that they have implemented the Lion's Quest curriculum for social and emotional learning, and the process began several months ago and the Safe School Professional wrote a grant to cover the funding of it, and that was approved. And then they partnered with the local Lions Club chapter to cover the cost of training. And so last week, the Lions Club came and cooked a barbecue lunch for all the staff and they're looking forward to implementing that curriculum for social and emotional learning. So that concludes my report. Do we have any, you did the Nevada Association of School Boards already, so I think we are done with board member comments, so we'll move on to Agenda Item 5, association reports for discussion only. Do we have any association reports tonight? No? Okay. We'll go ahead to Agenda Item 6, public comment for discussion only. Do we have any public comment tonight? Seeing none interested, I'm not going to read the whole paragraph. And we'll go on to Agenda Item 7, annual report for the Carson City School District Family Life Committee for the 2016-2017 school year. Sheila Story. This item is for discussion only.
Good evening, Madam Chair, or President and members of the board and the district office. My name is Sheila Story. I'm the chief nurse for the school district and the Carson High School nurse and the chair for the Family Life Advisory Committee. So in 2016-2017, we met five times. We reviewed and approved the Family Life Advisory Committee rules and procedures. We reviewed and approved the DVD called The High Cost of Love, or Free Love by Pam Stensel. We reviewed and approved the educational video for testicular self-exams by the Testicular Cancer Foundation. We also had two presentations given by the Carson City Health and Human Services on different curriculums that they offer, along with they also invited all the health classes to come over to the Carson City Health and Human Services for tours, in which we did approve for the health classes to go and tour the facility and see what they, see what resources they have for adolescents. Are there any questions?
Any questions? Trustee Swirzik.
Just backing up a little bit. What is the purpose of the Family Life Advisory Committee? What is your main, the main goal?
What they do is, it's a committee formulated by a chair, someone within the religious area, a teacher, a, someone in the medical field, a counselor, and five parents, along with students who attend the high school. And what we do is we review and approve different curriculums that health teachers or teachers want to present within their classroom through K through 12th grade. And sometimes there's, you know, touchy little areas and subjects, so what we do is we review and see if it's number one, age-appropriate, and then we choose a grade level on which it is appropriate for, and then if we do approve the materials, we let the teachers know that these materials are available to them if they choose to use them in their classroom. And it ranges from growth and development all the way up to adolescents. Does that help?
Do we have any further questions?
I just would like to add that this is a community committee. This isn't something that district office folks serve on. We provide the committee chair support by helping to advertise for vacant positions, prepare for the board meetings for when the board needs to fill the positions, when the board, if the board, if the committee requests ordering materials, we need to help support that, but this is something that is required by NRS to be a communities committee in support of the school district.
Thank you for that clarification and thank you for all the work that you do and all the, because it is a volunteer, even though it's required by NRS, it's a volunteer committee as well.
That's correct.
So, okay. If we have no other questions on this, we can go ahead and move on to Agenda Item 8, which is discussion and possible action to approve the selection of Family Life Committee members to serve three years, to serve three-year terms, September 2017 to September 2020 in the following categories, two parent representatives, one teacher, and one council representative for possible action. Sheila Story.
Thanks once again. For the record, my name is Sheila Story, chief nurse for the Carson City School District, school nurse at Carson High, and the chair for the Family Life Advisory Committee. So this past year, we did have some of our committee members leave us, so which gave us a counseling position, a teacher position, and two parent positions, and I was really excited. We had a very nice response to individuals who were interested in sitting on the committee and helping out for the next few years. So for your selection this evening, we'd like you to consider Whitney Tynes. She's a counselor at Carson Middle School. We'd like you to consider, let's see here, Christine Schilling. She's a first-grade teacher at Fritsch Elementary School to fill the teacher's position. And we also have two great parents, one Candace McDaniel, and the second one Christina Peterson. Candace McDaniel's here with us this evening, and Christina Peterson said she'd be here when her soccer game was over for her child. So I'd like to have Ms. McDaniel come up and introduce herself, if that's all right? Okay?
Please come forward and just, I mean, you've been introduced, but state your name.
Yes, for the record, Candace McDaniel, parent representative. I currently, in a professional capacity, I'm a health program manager for early intervention services, so I've been doing that for 12 years. And so for those of you that don't know, it's Individual Disability Education Act for babies, infants, and toddlers up to three. Once those three-year-olds, and we go with Part C, three-year-olds go to your guys' Part B. So I've been involved with the community for a long time. I have a bachelor's degree in human development and family studies and a graduate degree in human services and public administration. So I've spent a lot, a large part of my professional career in sort of the human service arena in the city, so. Personally, I have a sixth grader at Carson Middle School, a third grader at Fritsch Elementary School in the Gate Program, and I have six-month-old twins. So I'm very busy, but I'm very much looking forward to this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, and it sounds like you are very well qualified and grateful for your willingness to serve.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Do we have any other questions? Okay.
If you'd like, I do have a little bit of background information on Christina Peterson. Like I said, she's at a soccer game with her daughter this evening in Gardenville, and she wasn't sure what time it'd be over with. But she is a parent and a hard worker with, she's a single mom, and in 2003, she graduated from Carson High School. She says, "I moved away from graduate school and came back in 2010 to raise my daughter in the Carson City School District. I'm a 911 operator for the Regional Emergency Management Authority on REMZA and Care Flight in Reno. Giving back to the community is a huge part of her life." Her oldest daughter, Michaela, is in seventh grade, attends Carson Middle School, currently playing soccer at Carson City AYSO, a member of the Tiger Short Swim Team, and a long, and is looking forward to the upcoming volleyball season at Carson Middle School. Her youngest, Candace, is in fourth grade at Fremont Elementary School and participates in cheerleading with Pop Warner Cheer. She says, "I volunteer at both the girls' schools. Since I started kindergarten, I have chaperoned dances, week-long overnight science camps, stuffed peaches, assisted with Chromebook handout, and I am known and loved by all of my friends. Family is the first thing at home, and I would love the opportunity to be part of the committee and further be part of the Carson City School District family."
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Further discussion? Go ahead.
I guess just clarification, the motion as it's written doesn't mention the parents, so I'm going to read them into the motion. Because on the number eight, it talks about two parent representatives, one teacher and one counselor representative.
Okay, okay, and I think that's okay because the agenda item still said two parent representatives, even though we didn't have the names at the time.
So that's fine.
Okay.
I move that the Carson City School Board of Trustees approve the selection of Christine Schilling as a teacher representative and Whitney Tynes as a council representative, along with Candace McDaniel and Christina Peterson as the parent representatives, to serve on the Family Life Committee for a three-year term, September 2017 to September 2020.
Second.
Okay, motion by trustee Cassioppo, seconded by trustee Green. Do we have any further discussion? Any public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. Congratulations and thanks again for all your, for everyone being willing to serve on this and for the time.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Agenda Item 9, informational update on the Fritsch Elementary School Construction Connection Project with Q&amp;D Construction Company, construction manager at risk, CMAR, for discussion only. Mark Cornick and Mark Johnson.
Thank you President Crossman, trustees, and executive staff. Thank you for having me tonight. This will be a brief update on what's going on with the Fritsch Elementary Building Connection and addition project regarding the Guaranteed Maximum Price Contract, GMP, for this project. So the team that we have together for this is myself, AJ Feweling, MJ, Mark Johnson, JM is Jessica Munson, our assistant there, and JP Copolos is our architect. Principal Brown and vice-principal Farnworth has been involved with this project and sat in at our construction meetings, and we got a lot of good input from them. Q&amp;D Construction is the construction manager at risk on this project, and tonight we have with us from Q&amp;D is Greg Meehan, who's the project manager. He is a Carson City School District graduate. And Toby Bast is the VP of Building Division, also a school district graduate here in Carson City, that I believe he's tied up in a soccer game or something like that as well. He's supposed to be here any minute, moving quickly tonight, so. All right, so in 2016, we developed a facilities master plan committee to talk about some of the projects that we wanted to look forward, look at doing in the future here, and also a lot of building maintenance major projects. In 2013, the second phase of the Fritsch project was not completed due to funding repurposing for single-point entry projects. So this was one of the first projects we addressed in the facilities master plan this, last year. And at that time in 2013, the connection project was estimated about $800,000 project. A decision was made during our recent facilities master plan committee meetings to increase the scope on that project. We were adding two classrooms and then doing a tenant improvement in another classroom, which we are going to make into a couple needed offices, hallway, storage, and we're also going to repair most of all the old doors and hardware in that school that have been there since 1959, so they're starting to fail a bit. The budget for this project was increased to 1.15 million dollars, and this included the increase of the scope of the project and cost of construction with annual increases from that time period till now. Our estimates were based on roughly $300 a square foot for the project, which included the construction, the design, and all the fees on that project. During our meetings, we had some comments from some experts in the room that were in the construction industry. They commented that they started seeing 10% and up increases in construction costs and labor cost. So in our pre-construction estimates, which were done by Q&amp;D, the estimate on this project came to 1.155 million dollars, so we're about 5,000 over. We thought we could handle that through contingency, et cetera. And this was with all of the doors and an alternate wastewater connection project, which would include some concrete improvements around the site. So we first bid this out to subcontractors early September, and five of the trade, major trades did not bid it. We did not get one bid from five of those trades. And we feel that this was due to a lack of workforce and a lot of other construction happening here and out on USA Parkway, using most of the construction workforce. So we kind of went out, Q&amp;D and the school district, and we solicited some of the contractors we have used in the past, and asked if we could get some new quotes, and we rebid the project. And we did that on September 27th, and on the 29th, we went through the bids. And we did this a little bit different. We did a base bid on it, and we added, we did an add alternate, in other words, give us a separate price for the doors, so we could decide whether they were going to fit into the project or not, and a possible deduct to change how we do the wastewater system there. The bid came back at that time at 1,139,886, so we were underbid by roughly $10,000. We looked at this and we discussed multiple options. In fact, we had six different combinations of add alternates and deducts, et cetera, to look at what was going to be the best, best deal for us and most efficient way to use our dollars. And the district team decided to take the most conservative road on this with a base bid and the wastewater line reduction bid. So the total GMP on this came out to 1,122,722. So hopefully, no other unforeseen issues come up in this project, but you never know because there's a lot of things underground. But it's looking pretty good, and we can use, we have $36,000 that we have in contingency, so hopefully we can put that forward as the project gets near the end, add the doors and hardware, and if not, maybe add some maintenance money into that to get that portion of the project done. That's all I have for you. If you have any questions, I can answer them, and Greg could probably answer any technical industry questions if you have them.
Do you have any questions? Trustee Swirzik.
Yeah. I'd like to hear from Mark Johnson. No, I want to know your role in this, this construction project going forward, and then Q&amp;D, how do you work together? Do you duplicate work or, you know, Q&amp;D is a CMAR? How does this work? Explain to me how this works and who monitors the OSHA safety standards?
I'll let them talk about the OSHA standards. I take the project from conception to completion, do the RFP, request for proposals, I do most all the paperwork. To hire a contractor, which is the CMAR, I hire all the sub consultants. I work with the consultants before the CMAR comes onboard. I hire the architect with our contracts, do the RFP with them, bring them onboard, do the pre-design before they even come onboard, the 30% design, do the plan checks. I do the plan checks with them for the district representation. Then I'll work with the CMAR throughout the project for quality control, representing the district with the contractors, do quality control on them, do weekly meetings with them through conception and through closeout. You just had to make me speak.
One thing I'd like-
You always come here, want to hear from one Mark.
Yeah, I know, I'm the talking head. He's the guy that does all the work. No, but what we do is every week, we meet on Thursday, and we have an hour and a half meeting for Fritsch, we have an hour and a half meeting right behind that with Pioneer because Q&amp;D is on both of those projects. And we go through a schedule, and their system is excellent, and it's all online, so every time there's a new drawing, it gets downloaded into the system, and anybody who has access can go and look at that, make comments on there, and those comments are brought back to each meeting. They have an excellent estimating team that comes in and gives us different options. You know, we'll say, "We want this," and they'll say, "Well, you might look at this." So the communication is really the key on this. And the engineers and the other A&E staff is run under the architect, so the architect's at those meetings, the, our customers at that meetings, the school people, so we're getting their input for it. So it's very transparent, and, you know, at the end of the day, a lot of it comes back to that dollar, and are we getting there, and what are we getting for our dollar? And today, we're seeing, when I ran some of these numbers earlier, I saw that we're about 21% higher than originally we estimated three or four years ago. And so it's a really tough world out there right now, and it's, it's great to have a partner like Q&amp;D that's in the industry and they know what's going on out there.
Good evening, Madam President and board members. I'm Greg Meehan with Q&amp;D Construction. I'm the project manager. To answer your question specifically, the OSHA- To answer your question specifically, the OSHA tracking standards and compliance all falls under us as the C Mar contractor, and we monitor that and take care of any of your safety concerns.
And as a Carson High grad-
Yes.
Then you are working in our best interests, is that it?
Absolutely. That seems to be the theme. I actually came from a soccer game at Carson High School. And I may be embarrassed to say, I don't think I've been back there since 1980, so.
So with two projects going to you, are you head of both of those projects, Pioneer and Fritsch?
Yes, correct. I'm the project manager for both projects. It allows for the cost to be spread across multiple projects, keeping the overall cost down for the district.
So what exactly is the schedule for like Fritsch because of the classrooms that we're adding and the couriers? They're all connected to other classrooms.
Yes, correct.
So what are you guys doing to minimize the disruptions in the classrooms for them?
So it starts meeting mostly with the Vice Principal and Principal Dan and Cory? Cory, Cody, excuse me. We're going to coordinate all that work, activities to coincide with their schedule. We're going to be contained within our boundaries of our work area during activities where, you know, school children might be out on the playgrounds, any deliveries, and any activities that might impact that. We'll wait till after hours beforehand, but we're planning on staying within our area when kids might be out on the playgrounds. And that's a process. We work that logistics out with the, with the principal directly to make sure the staff and students are safe.
And when is construction starting?
We're looking to start in late October and wrap this up in February of 2018.
Do we have any other questions? Oh, AJ, go ahead.
If I could just comment, about two weeks ago, I went to a meeting up at the Washoe County School District for their capital funding protection committee, which is a part of the WC1 sales tax they passed. And there were two things of note related to this and all construction, but they had this really neat graph showing the number of general contractors on various projects in northern Nevada that are saying they're having a hard time finding subs to work. And across the board, every trade, they're having a really hard time. So what, what happened with us on that, that bid was not unusual in any way. The other thing, just two years ago, they were using 20 to 22 million dollars to build an elementary school, and they have that now up to 30 to 35 million dollars. So the costs are just exploding right now. So it's, it's a challenging environment, as Mark said.
Trustee Cassiope.
Just quick, I know, and what AJ's saying is exactly right. We see that. We sit down on what we do all the time. Costs are just going up. Everybody's busy. To get anybody onboard is expensive. And I think it's, you know, it's a very wise idea. I like the idea of construction starting in October, wrapping up in February, as a lot of the trades are slowing down. You know, more are available, so, you know, you know, we should have the workforce available to do the work, and, and fees will come in as, you know, as reasonable as they can. So I think that's great timing.
Well, and hopefully, the winter break gives, when school's out of session, gives some good time to get more done.
If the weather crop rates.
I'd just like to introduce Toby Bast. He has shown up. Hopefully, you saved one really hard question for him.
No, there are all these soccer games, and no one's giving us any results. Does anyone have a question? Well, I, what is, what is your role, Mr. Bast? Bast?
Yeah, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm the Vice President of Building Construction at Q and D Construction.
Do we have any questions? Okay. Thank you very much. Oh, go ahead, you can say.
Just for an update, Galena versus Carson City. Carson City won 3 to 2.
Well, thanks. Thank you very much, Mark and Mark. We'll go ahead and move to Agenda Item 10, Presentation on College and Career Readiness. Indicators at the high school level in the Carson City School District for discussion only. Susan Kima, Michelle Lewis, Jason Zona, Tasha Fuson, Nikki Hendy, Carrie Jordan, and Jill
Susan Kima for the record. If you can bear with me, I'm going to give you a bit of a historical background on why or how the, the huge college and career initiative really took off in Nevada in the last couple of years. A few years ago, about 100 staff from Nevada System of Higher Education, the Department of Education, and K-12 districts, along with business and industry, met in Las Vegas, Nevada, for the purpose of expanding our knowledge of evidence-based strategies for increasing access to higher education for all students. This was put on by WestEd, which is a research regional think tank based on for, for education, and also the U.S. Department of Education, who had an initiative to bridge research policy and practice by providing key Nevada education stakeholders an opportunity to hear from experts across the country. They provided us with best practices. We had a chance to talk to each other, and this informed policy and practice from, for the Department of Ed. From that summit, our college and career workforce readiness standards were developed, and other legislative and NDE actions that have taken, I would say, the last two legislative sessions, you will have seen things that came out of that, such as funding for AP and Jump Start courses and changing our social studies standards. There were, due to the, in that summit, there were three problems of practice that were identified. Nevada, one, was Nevada did not have a college-going culture, and I'm going to put "yet," because that's exactly how it was written when the minutes came back to us. It was Nevada didn't have a college-going culture "yet" at that time. Now, think about this. This is two legislative sessions ago. Students needed both content and college knowledge to be successful. Nevada did not need to reinvent the wheel, because there were states out there that were using best evidence, evidence-based practices to improve college readiness for students. In addition, five evidence-based strategies were championed out of that summit and put into place with the Nevada Department of Education, the legislature, with expectations for districts to follow through with. One, offer courses and curricula that prepare students for college-level work and ensure that students understand what constitutes a college-ready curriculum by ninth grade. Utilize, this is one we talk about a lot, utilize assessment measures throughout high school, so that students are aware of how prepared they are for college and assist them in overcoming deficiencies as identified. Surround students with adults and peers who build and support their college-going aspirations. Engage and assist students in completing critical steps for college entry. Increase families' financial awareness and help students apply for financial aid. Tonight, I have the pleasure to introduce to you several highly regarded staff members from the district in the field of their choice, who will share our district's progress to developing students who are college and career-ready. While each of the discussion items could have warranted their own agenda item, and we could have done this over a period of weeks, we've done that before. These aren't, these, most of the items we're going to talk about tonight have been highlighted in board meetings in the past. Tonight is a data summary showing the use of evidence-based strategies identified as a result of that summit years ago. And I'd like to say thank you for bearing with me as I took you through this historical perspective, because there were several of you who were not on the board at that time when this started, as well as the folks behind me. Not everybody was in their current positions or even in our district as that, at that time. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce, we have Mrs. Nicole Hendy and Mr. Carrie Jordan, who will start us off by sharing results of the Millennium Scholarship recipient data, which opens doors for our students to attend post-secondary education. This in turn also supports not only Nevada's, but Carson City's college-going culture. In addition, we have other agenda items that are going to be covered by Principal Tasha Fuson of the Carson High and Jason Zona, Principal of Pioneer. We'll be talking about advanced placement, Jump Start results, and a new program at Carson High called AVID. Now, I'm going to let Tasha unveil what that acronym means. Mr. Zona will also be discussing the new schedule over at Pioneer, and he and Jill Council will also present data for Carson Online. Michelle Lewis will present an annual update regarding CTE results for career technical education, workplace readiness assessment, the end-of-program technical assessment, and our certificate earners. Now, thank you for your patience, and I'm going to turn it, the podium over to the real presenters. And here is the, the clicker to move the PowerPoint along, and if there isn't one in your hands and you want to check who's next, it's right here.
Okay. Thank you. President Krasman and members of the board. My name is Nikki Hendy, and I'm the Lead Counselor at Carson High School. This is Carrie Jordan. He's the Counselor at Pioneer High School. So one of the things that came about a few years back, so in 2012, the board decided to up the requirements for high school graduation. So we increased the academic requirements in math and science to elevate the number of students who are college and career-ready upon graduation. So we increased the number of math credits required from three to four, and all students began taking algebra as that entry-level course in ninth grade. We also added a science course, so it's now three credits are required, which was increased from two, and now all students at the ninth-grade level start in biology. This has given us incredible gains as far as the Millennium Scholarship goes, because now all students, in order to graduate, have to take the courses that are required for the Millennium Scholarship. So we've seen, last year's graduates were the first year that we're required to have those four years of math and three years of science in order to graduate, and you can see that, those numbers represented. So over the last few years, so 2013, 14, and 14, 15, we had about 32% of the Carson High School graduating class receiving the Millennium Scholarship. In the 15, 16 year, 36%, and then last year, we went all the way up to 47%. So from about a third to almost a half, which is huge. And I know Pioneer has been going up as well. Look, Mr. Jordan, speak.
Yeah, for Pioneer, we get a lot of our students who are, you know, behind on credits, their grades are struggling. So our numbers are, and our percentage is, is much lower, but we've been seeing, because of these changes, we've been seeing a steady increase. Over the past three years, we've gone from three recipients of the Millennium Scholarship to two years ago, we had five, and last year, we had seven. And this year, kind of looking at GPAs, we could be around seven, eight. We'll see what happens. And again, it's, you know, due to our increase in math. We upped our Algebra II courses from two sections to four sections, and gone from 17 students last year in Algebra II to 40 students this year. So it's a significant increase, so we're really hoping to see some of that change upward.
Mrs. Kima mentioned AVID, and I'm actually going to speak on that. So it's a new program at Carson High School. It stands for Advancement Via Individual Determination. And as you can see in front of you, the mission of AVID is to close the achievement gap by preparing all students for college readiness and success in a global society. So the focus is really on underrepresented, underrepresented groups of students and getting them college-ready. Students are taught, students in the AVID program are taught organizational skills and academic conversational skills within their AVID elective course. They have access to AVID tutoring, which is a little bit of a different tutoring program, and it's something new that our students and the tutors are learning right now. Students are scheduled with AVID-trained teachers. So all of the students in the AVID program, and I'll go over who those students are in a moment, but they all have AVID-trained teachers for their English class as well as their biology class, and they're all in an AVID elective. And we have, I will be, I'm the AVID counselor, and I will be visiting that classroom at least quarterly to go over college and career exploration, healthy decision-making, and financial literacy. And then each year, we'll take those students on a tour of a college. So this year, we're going to go to WNC, next year to TMCC, and then their junior year to UNR, and I believe their senior year, we're going to visit Sierra Nevada College. Sierra Nevada College is coming tomorrow to speak with any student who's interested, but they're going to give the presentation in the AVID class, so that all of those students are able to hear the presentation. So this is our first year with AVID. So 10 staff members, Mrs. Fuson and myself, and eight teachers went to the Summer Institute in Sacramento this summer. And we have 17 freshmen taking advantage of the program. We're hoping to grow that program each year. We have two juniors who came from AVID schools and were really disappointed that there wasn't, and already moving along, you know, an AVID class for juniors, so we actually included them in the class with the freshmen as tutors. So they're getting some of the curriculum, as well as being able to tutor those freshmen and be student leaders in that class. And then our goal is to add a class each year, so a new freshman class each year, so that by 2021, we'll have an AVID elective class at each grade level. And I am going to turn it over, I believe, to Mr. Zona or Ms. Council.
Nikki, before you go, can you kind of, what's the difference with AVID with what we've already been doing at the high school with like MASH and different programs? Why go this way and, you know, what difference is it going to make?
Like, right now, the students are learning Cornell note-taking, so it's a different kind of organizational strategy. They have binder checks on a weekly basis where the teacher's looking at kind of what's going on in their classes. The other teachers that are, they're taking the classes with are being trained in the, have been trained in the Cornell note-taking as well. So just kind of giving them those strategies. A lot of students get to college and don't know how to take notes, don't know how to study for tests, and so we're trying to build those strategies, as well as giving them information about college, information about what choices they have after high school, where they'll really, I'll go in when they're juniors and seniors to do an essay-writing class with them. I'll sit down with that group and do the FAFSA when they're seniors, a little bit more structured. They're also doing what's called philosophical chairs and Socratic seminars, where they're really learning academic vocabulary that is helping them. So the MASH program is really for kind of that lower end, the students that are struggling. This is really for more like the 2.0 to 3.5 students that are maybe lower socioeconomic or maybe in an underrepresented other demographic, where, so ELL students or students from minorities that maybe don't see themselves going to college, but absolutely have the capability to get there. Oh, go ahead.
How are you finding these students coming out of the middle school? And how do you, do you pick them and approach them? Because I'm guessing they don't know about-
They don't. So in the spring, we asked the counselors to approach the teachers and ask for recommendations, so we kind of gave them the criteria we were looking for. And we got about 60 names of students that they recommended for the program. We invited all of those students and their parents to come to an informational night, and then from that informational night, we had about, like I said, 17, 19 students that were interested in the program and committed to the program for the year at least.
Yeah, I think go back to the Millennium Scholars and this whole program. And it was good, the way you presented, and there were a substantial increase, nearly 50% of the 2017 graduates to qualify for this. You have to have a 3.25 grade point average, or-
A 21 on the ACT, or I believe it's a 1080 on SAT.
So how many qualified, that didn't have a 3.2, but qualified with a 21 or higher on the ACT, or they could have taken the SAT also?
You know, I don't know that number offhand. Myself, I probably had five to seven of my caseload of 100 students that qualified based on the ACT scores alone. So maybe 30 to 40, 30 to 50 of those students that qualified was based on that test score.
I want to come back to the ACT. All juniors take it.
Yes.
How many juniors that take this? And certainly, you can take it in the 12, in your senior year, but- And certainly, you can take it in the 12, in your senior year, but how many?
We had several more that, like, if it hadn't been based on GPA, could have gotten it, but also had the GPA. So several did score at least that 21.
Okay, yeah, I'd like, I'd kind of like to know, you know, just maybe the board would, you know, the number, Millennium Scholars that got 21 in the ACT, or a score in the SAT.
I can certainly research that.
Because it's, you know, we get the reports, you know, on the ACT in the last couple of years, but there was not a remarkable number of kids that got 21 or above. And so they moved on to the senior year, and now we have 50% of those kids qualifying. And there should be, it seems, there should be some kind of a correlation between the ACT overall, the grade point average, 3.25, and just the ACT is just a test of, are we meeting academic standards?
Well, I have my own view on why some students maybe didn't do as well. We have, you know, traditionally with the SBACK and End of Course and all of the testing that they do, they have unlimited time. And with the ACT, it's very new for them, where they have, you know, 45 questions that they have to answer in 30 minutes, and it's not something that they're used to. I would love to see our school district to give the pre-ACT to all 10th graders so that they have some exposure to that before going to 11th grade. We encourage all students to do some test prep, but they don't all take advantage of the resources. There's a lot of free resources out there, and not all students take advantage of that. But I do think that for a lot of them, it was something that was very new.
So Mr. Swarzak, board members, we will be bringing ACT discussion back to the board. What you have seen was the junior results. We now have our senior results, and plus, we have a planning committee on some of the action steps we would like to take to improve those scores. And what we could do is, at that time, break down the data for you, since we don't have that for you at this time, but when, I think we're looking at that presentation. I was trying to think, when was our meeting? November? Yeah, it was sometime, the first meeting, I believe, in November.
And just a quick question on the ACT scores. When we do get the numbers of what the juniors, isn't that an average? So some obviously score higher and some score lower, so you could have quite a few higher and some low ones that really pull the average down, I guess. Okay.
I guess, sort of like what Ron was saying, but I, wouldn't it be a lot better if we looked at, isn't it really sort of unfortunate that they're taking it their junior year? Because it seems to me that maybe if they were taking it their senior year, they get a whole nother year of learning, and the ones that might have a lower GPA, conceivably, they could do better on that test, even with a lower GPA. So, I mean, they, I'm guessing that we're not going to have the best correlation between GPA and ACT scores, since they're taking it over a year before, you know, without a whole year of learning or more.
Well, generally, the rule of thumb is that students should take ACT and/or SAT in the spring of their junior year, and then again in the fall of their senior year, because they do generally score higher. We did pay for some students to retake that test last year, and we did see some growth from those students, generally about four points growth for the students that were retaking it. Anything else?
I just had a question on the Avid program too, because I know there's the freshman transition class that all freshmen take, and it seems like the note-taking and some of the organization would benefit...
They're not doubling up.
What?
I was going to say, they're not doubling up, so the students are taking Avid instead in the place of freshman transitions.
Okay, and I guess my question is, Avid, are some of the elements of Avid looking at going towards that freshman transition class?
I guess, yes.
Sorry. That's kind of an out-there question.
Tasha Fusana, Principal, Carson High School. Avid is actually an international program. It is research-based strategies focused specifically on helping students in the middle learn those college readiness skills to go on to college. So our teachers, when it, the big bang for the buck, I guess, if you will, with Avid, is that we do have the ability to get our staff Avid-trained. So as Nikki said, 10 of us went to Summer Institute. The teachers receive intensive training in teaching strategies as it relates to critical thinking, note-taking, using inquiry in the classroom, things that we, of course, have all learned in other places, but this is a very focused, intensive way to do that. Then addition to that, the elective class itself, for the students, teaches those students those college readiness skills that although we do touch base on that, for instance, in freshman transitions, which is only a semester freshman class. Avid is a full-year-long class, and then the students actually take it four years while they're in high school. They will take Avid every single year. So our freshmen are taking ninth-grade Avid this year. They will go into 10th-grade Avid next year. There is a different curriculum for 10th-grade Avid. Their junior class, they'll take a third year of Avid curriculum, and it is literally around those skills, as Nikki said, that help the student access college, writing college entrance essays within the classroom environment, filling out the FAFSA within the classroom environment, learning how to do interest inventories, career searches, access financial aid and different resources to help them get into college. Those things that many of our students who have parents who've navigated the college system get that support at home, but that's why this focuses on that middle group of students that have the academic ability and the drive via the name Avid, Advancement Via Individual Determination, because it's really about the students' drive and desire to be in this program and participate, and then gives them that structure that they might not have at home, simply because the parents haven't navigated that system themselves. So though we would like to do that for all of our students, ninth through 12, our schedule doesn't permit it. The one thing that's nice about Avid is they are really focusing on going Avid-school-wide. I've been actually working with Avid over the past 12 years of my career at three different sites that I've been at, and when I first got exposed to Avid, that program itself is over 40 years old, but they really focus just on that elective class. Now they have changed their philosophy to go Avid-school-wide, so you'll be seeing all of our students benefit from that, but you do have intensive focus on that elective class. And one thing that I heard loud and clear from many of our board members, Mr. Swarzak, is that every time I come in front of the board, I'm always asked, well, what are you doing for kids in the middle? We've got a lot of great resources for kids who are struggling at the bottom end. You're doing great things for kids at the top end with AP and dual credit, et cetera. What are you doing for our kids in the middle? Well, here's what we are doing for our kids in the middle that will benefit all of our students. So that's why it's an important thing to bring onboard. And like I said, there is actually curriculum that is attached to it, curriculum for the teachers, for the counselors, very specific training, Nikki's training at Summer Institute was different than mine as the principal. So it's very exciting, and we're hoping truly and honestly, and I'm going to use this as a pitching opportunity, that there is Avid from elementary through high school. I would love to bring our middle schools on in the next year or two, and eventually down to the elementarys. And that really builds that college-going climate, starting at third grade on up. So it's a super exciting program, and if any of you want to go to Summer Institute with us this year, I would love to bring you.
Thank you for the invitation. We'll see for free. Does anyone have any other questions on Avid, or are we ready?
Is there a cost to the program? Before you leave, is there a fiscal impact here?
There is. And in reality, it's really not that expensive, considering that you get, the biggest expense was taking my teachers to Summer Institute. So of course, we had to pay a registration fee per teacher. I want to say that was $360-ish, right around there. And then we, of course, had to pay for hotel rooms. We drove a school district van over the hill to Sacramento, so they got all right in the van with me, so we saved some costs that way. So the nice thing is at least the training is in Sacramento. There are trainings in Hawaii, if we wanted to foot that bill. I would love to go. Mr. Cassiope, we can go together this summer. It'd be awesome. But, so, it's manageable. That's the, that's the big expense. We did have to buy an Avid library. That was a little over $5,000 this year, I think, for the Avid elective class. And then there is a district fee, which I think was around $5,000, $6,000 as well. So it's not something that is cost-prohibitive, as long as you plan ahead for it.
Thank you. Okay, do we have any other questions on that? Okay, I'll let you guys continue with whoever was up next.
Jason Zona, President Crossman, members of the board, thanks for having us here tonight. I'm going to use the clicker. There we go. We, the district noticed, one of the main barriers for graduation years ago was not really the exams, and it was more about credits. So in 2008, '09, as a team in the district office and members of the community and schools, we looked at different companies to do online. So we started in 2009, looking at a company. The students of Carson High and Pioneer got to design the logo, they got to brand it, Carson Online. You see purple and blue in there, it was kind of cool. But in 2009, we served 60 students. Last year alone, Carson Online served 970 in one year. And so you're about to see some figures here about credit accrual, and right there in front of you is the number in 15, 16 of credits earned in high school, 684. Last year was 769. So I can't imagine life without online right now. I mean, talk about graduation, we, I'm going to introduce Jill in a second, but she's got some facts about graduation and other exciting things. This shows you what's new and what's a credit recovery, and so the amount of credit recovery was 234 credits, and the new credits that were earned last year were 468. So that is huge. We got a call by the company, Pearson, the other day, and so Jill and I are in the office, and they were asking us, you know, why do you think it's so successful? And, you know, it's a great company, we researched it, they have great support, but I think our site is a hub for the last several years. You know, it's small, we have a lot of layers of support, and the students for online get to, they get to get helped with the layers of support we have. But one of the biggest reasons why it's so successful is Jill Council. What she does for the program and what she does to train the others around the district, she helps manage four different sites. There's about a dozen people she's supporting, and like I said, 970 students last year. So kudos to her and who she's training, and so I really appreciate what Jill is doing. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jill.
Hi, I'm Jill Council with Carson Online. Kind of going back to that phone call that we had the other day, it was kind of interesting because they were asking us, what makes it so successful, what makes it work? And I was trying to explain to them, it's the staff, you know, it's, we've got that layer, and we've got more than one person double-checking on our students. So with that, it really helps to make sure we're keeping track of what everybody is doing. So I can call over at any of the secondary schools and say, I've got a student I'm kind of concerned about because they're falling behind, or, you know, they're failing the class, and so it's not just me looking at what they're doing, they're looking in the classroom too. And so it's just a concerted effort of everybody pitching in, and that's the reason we're seeing the numbers we're seeing. So, kind of going through these numbers, I noticed that they brought up everything, you know, I was kind of giving a breakdown of the classes of what we did credit recovery-wise in full classes. And across the board, you know, Pioneer, you know, I'll kind of start with them. We had, with the full-time kids, we had 401 full classes that were completed with the high school students and 40 credit recovery classes. At Carson High School, with the part-time students over there, they had 602 classes that were completed successfully. 272 were full classes, 330 were credit recovery. So it's working, you know, it's across the board. Pioneer, you know, where we bring our kids in and they're credit deficient, I was actually kind of surprised because it was, the numbers turned out backwards there. There were 266 classes that were completed, 168 were full classes, and 98 were credit recovery. So, you know, kind of putting those numbers together, it surprised me a lot, because I thought the majority of our kids that were in our computer labs at the schools were mainly doing credit recovery, and it really is a balance. You know, they're covering both credit recovery and credit accrual. I guess, you know, I kind of want to go over the history too, because there is credit that is due out there. We started with the credit recovery on giving the students diagnostic tests. So they were taking two tests in whatever subject they were enrolled in, and then based on how they did is where they, what they had left to do in the class. And we were finding that a lot of what they were taking tests on were things that Nevada Standards didn't require. So we went to Dr. Prada and the ISs, and we were kind of like, okay, we need to come up with something for credit recovery. And the ISs stepped up and took all of the core classes, and they came up with condensed versions of the class, basically eliminating what wasn't required for Nevada Standards. And this is what we're using for our credit recovery, and that's, I think, part of the reason we are seeing such success each year, as the classes increase and the kids are completing them and they're reaching graduation. We use two different programs. We use Advanced Academics and we use Gradpoint. Advanced Academics, we're finding that the content is a little bit more rigorous, more difficult. It's lengthier, the readings are extensive, and we have our students start with the Advanced Academics. And if we find that they cannot do that, then we move to the Gradpoint. And the Gradpoint is simpler, less content, not less content, the reading isn't as extensive. So whereas Advanced Academics, we might have an entire page with readings and links and everything, the Gradpoint brings it down even further, and it's no more than 250 words on a page. So if they struggle with the one program that we're having the great success with, we move to the Gradpoint. And really, what I wanted to end with is, it was just a, last year, at the end of the year, I wanted to see what happened with graduation. I wanted to know how many of our graduates had actually used any online class to graduate. And 98% of the Pioneer graduates used one online class. They took at least one online class in order to graduate. And at Carson High School, there was 48% of the graduates had an online class in order to graduate. So I thought that was just kind of, kind of fun, just to see that it really does work, and it, we do see success.
So with the Advanced Academic and then the Great Point, is that, are, one of them a credit recovery, and then one's an advanced credit?
Advanced Academics has both. So it has the full classes, and then it has the, what the ISs broke down and had it meet Nevada Standards. So the, basically, we've reduced it, the content, so that they can do, since the credit recovery, and Ms. Kima, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but credit recovery, to get back their credit, they have to have minimum 20 hours of...
Remediation.
Remediation, thank you. I kind of stuck on that word. Remediation in order to get the credit back. And so that's basically what the ISs did, is they took that and they broke it down. Most of the classes are longer than the 20 hours, but we're finding that they're really being successful. So if they're redoing an Algebra I, you know, we're finding that when, by the time they get to Algebra II, they've had that background, so it's working.
I'd just like to thank you and your staff to watch the growth throughout these years since 2012 has just been incredible, and especially at Pioneer. And for, you know, we were always talking about how we wanted to be able to grow an online school because of the competition, and I think you guys have done a great job, and so many students have benefited from it, and it's just incredible the way that your staff cares about these kids, and if they don't show up, you go after them, and it's just, it's just really, really neat to see that they feel special and it's important about what you guys are doing. So thank you for all you guys do.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would just, I would say, just don't leave. No, what you've done is something that is pretty remarkable. Now, if, but I have a question here. If a student wants to enroll in an online class or classes, do they... or classes, do they go directly to you, do they go to someone on the, say it's in Carson High, and they want to take three online classes, how does the process work, or how does the student get this?
Well, this year, and I'm really excited about it, is Carson High has started back with the full-time online students. So right now, it's kind of a, you know, either high school will have a full-time online student. For the part-time students, there are, the ones from Carson High, if they're not enrolled in an actual period, then they do come to me. For Carson Middle, it's the same way, Eagle Valley is the same way. If they're not actually enrolled in a class period, then they do come and see me, and then we go on ahead, and I kinda talk to them about it a little bit and get them going.
So then, do you coordinate then with the schools, Eagle Valley, Carson? You know, as far as the students' progress, how does that work?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. And usually what I'll do is, if I'm having a student that is kind of struggling with it, I let the, you know, like, I let Kim Cooley over at Carson High know, or I let Lisa Stocky Coop know, you know, that we've got somebody doing it outside, and they're kinda struggling, can you talk to them, can you pull them in and kind of see what's going? And that's what I mean, you know, it's an umbrella, you know, it's, everybody is doing what they need to do. The counselors as well, you know, it's, I can call them and say, look, we've got somebody who's really struggling here, what can we do? And they do the same thing, they pull them in and they talk to them. So it's layers, you know, it's just layers of people who are contributing to making this a success.
Well, as a general of this, you direct traffic, and you've, but you've created those networks, so, for the benefit of the students. So again, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, and there's more still coming, so.
I think there's a schedule slide coming up. Okay. So we, we're in our second year of a new schedule at Pioneer. It's a true four-by-four block, and students have a four-period day. It is 90 minutes per period, and so what we did was, we added some minutes in the morning, and we added some minutes in the afternoon. And we went against all types of research for, you know, young people and teenagers about starting earlier, and we wanted to see what would happen. So we did that, we're in our second year, and I can say that looking at attendance data, we were up in attendance every one of the reporting periods last year, by making it earlier and ending later. So that was very interesting. And so, you know, we have, the free breakfast does help, we have an attendance clerk, Mrs. Granucci, we have a lot of different factors in there, but we're very, very proud that getting an earlier day and later day, the kids are still coming in, and they're doing a great job. What that did for our schedule was it allowed us to have more courses, support for math and English. So if you're in Algebra I and you're struggling, you may have a support class, you'll have it 90 minutes on an A day and then 90 minutes on a B day, so you don't go anytime without math. That's the idea. English as well, if you're struggling in English, you're gonna have English course, A day, English support, B day. On the block, we talked about 20 minutes of instructional time every single day that it adds. We were able to add some more JAG sections, a three-year completer for CTE with Mr. Don, he's our CTE guy, I think you've already heard from him several times, Don Bland. Added some PE sections. We, the other interesting thing about the block is you are scheduled for eight periods in two days, but if you use online in one of those periods, we're expecting students to get through two courses in a year, so you end up with a nine as a minimum, nine minimum credits. So I was talking to the staff the other day and wondering, how are our kids really doing? Are they really doing it? And I had a lot of head nodding, and the kids are doing that plus some. So some of the kids, you know, won't work for, but others are taking that nine as a minimum and going even farther. So that's the beauty of the credits in the four-by-four block. The other thing that teachers loved was it added a prep every single day, because our teachers were going every other day before, and now they have 90 minutes every day of prep, and they, they're much happier, I can tell you that. But I started with the last one, but earlier start time and later end date, you know, that was really the gamble, and we're in our second year, and I also wondered, hey, you know, if we get out later, why would I go to Pioneer? Why wouldn't I just stay somewhere else? And they're still coming over. And so when they come over, we explain the schedule, no one even bats an eye when we say we're here till 2:15, and we start earlier. They still wanna come, so. So that's everything I had on the schedule, and I think I'm gonna turn this over to questions, if you have any, first.
Have any questions right now? Thank you.
All right, thank you all very much.
I see my cue. Good evening, President Crossman, members of the board, members of the school district office. I'm here to address career and technical education and its role in college and career readiness. In CTE, we believe, and it is my mantra always, that our students need to continue on to post-secondary education after high school. You will always hear me say that. CTE is for all students, CTE is not programs of study for non-college-bound students. And so if you hear that out in the community, please, please gently correct our folks. So we're going to look at our, oh, somebody help me with this. I got it. We're going to look at our new website for CTE, it's CarsonCTE.com. Ms. Kelly, our web design, amazing web design teacher, has put this together. All of our programs of study are up, all of our partners, students are just about ready to be able to access opportunities through that. As you know, a few years ago, we, 389.800, Nevada Administrative Code 389.800, was passed, and what that essentially says is that students in CTE in the completer level, which for most classes, for most programs of study, is the third year, have to pass the State Workplace Readiness Skills Exam Assessment, which is based on those employability skills that we keep hearing from business and industry that our students need to have. And then students also need to pass the End-of-Program Technical Assessment, which is an assessment that tests them on everything they've learned during that three-year period of time, and they need to maintain a 3.0 GPA in that, in that sequence of courses. So these are our results for the last four years on our career and technical state testing. In the Workplace Readiness Assessment, you can see we've really improved to a 96.6% passing rate, that is the highest in the state. Our teachers worked really hard to make that happen. We did a lot of work in our PLCs, did a lot of sharing of curriculum and ideas to help our students be successful on that, on that exam. The End-of-Program Technical Assessment, we are now sitting at 74.4% passing. The State Expected Performance Indicator is 48.5%. We're second in the state in that area. And then certificate earners, again, those are the students that have passed both of the exams and maintained a 3.0 GPA in the course sequence, we're sitting at 59.5%. Like to see some improvement, improvement there.
Still second in the state with that.
Yeah, yeah. Any questions about what's going on in CTE right now? We're rocking it.
Do we have any questions from the board? Go ahead.
I think the numbers are great, first of all, I mean, this is, it's nice to see Carson shining. And I think the CTE program, you're exactly right, it's for everybody, not, you know, not, not college-bound students, but exactly for college-bound students and everybody else. What do you think, because across the board, I look at all the, all the school districts, when you talk about your certificate award rate, does that include kids that just decide for some reason, I don't want a certificate? Or is it, well, why are those numbers, you know, everything's in the 90s and the high 70s, and all of a sudden, all the counties really drop? What do you think the reason for that is?
We've studied that, and that's a great question. It's, what we found at Carson in our PLC work is the grading strategies needed some work, and so we're seeing our grades improve. If a student gets a D, or even sometimes a C their freshman year, it's very hard for them to make that up and get that B average. So that's why, that's why you see that. Also, I wanted to address something else that I thought one of you would ask a question about. Last year, we had 170 students that were completers, this year, 168, two less. That's, we lost a couple of incredible teachers, Penny in culinary and Adam Watley in IT Essentials, and whenever you have a new teacher, you'll see, you'll see a turnover like that. We also did not have a completer level of sports medicine, which is a very popular class. So we're sitting at over 1,700 duplicated count students in CTE right now, 1,600 and something of our students, about 75% of our population is actually enrolled in some kind of CTE program. Right now, we have 258 completers sitting in those Level III classes.
So Michelle, how does the, let's talk about the manufacturing program and the engineering program. How do they fit into this? Or, you know, the manufacturing got off to a little bit of a rough start, but where are we now? I mean, as far as tying it with WNC, but as far as this program?
Engineering is exploding, we've got four sections of Level I, we've got incredible teachers in that area, Mr. Gerdner and the new teacher, Mr. Lobzinger. We also have Level III Civil Engineering and Architecture that Mr. Lobzinger's teaching. That class is packed to the, that program is packed. We're very happy with what we're seeing in there. Manufacturing, a little different story, it's off to a slow start, but you have to expect that with any new program. It took engineering a few years to get grounded and get, and, you know, have it to the point where students wanted to sign up for it. So right now, we have four sections of manufacturing, two of Level I, two of Level II. The lab looks absolutely fantastic, thanks to Mr. Cornick and his, and Mark, Mark and Mark. And so I think, you know, it's gonna take a couple of years to get it going.
Do we have any other questions? And I was just gonna comment that the only district we were second to was Washoe County, and don't they have several high schools dedicated solely to CTE?
They have the signature academies.
Yeah, and we're a comprehensive high school, so I just was gonna say that.
So that's okay, we'll beat them next year. Okay, thank you.
I'm back. Tasha Fiuson, Principal Carson High School, and I get to talk to you this evening about AP and Jump Start. Okay, so in 2015, one of our major goals was to increase the number of students at Carson High participating in AP and earning a score of three or higher on their correlating AP test. In order for a student, in most cases, to earn college credit, they have to score three or higher, three, four, or five. So we're happy to announce that this has happened. We've also increased the number of AP courses offered over the past few years, I'll go through that a little bit later. This graph shows you that in 2014, we had approximately 213 students taking 369 tests. So again, you'll have a student who might enroll in two, three, or four AP courses, so it's broken out into two different numbers. But over the course of the past five years, we've increased that to 299 students this year, that will be taking over 570 tests. You can see we had a little bit of a dip from 14 to 15, that is when we started Jump Start the first year, and we did lose a couple students from the AP program at a Jump Start, but I have some data on Jump Start as well. So we were able to rebound, and then if you look between 16, 17, you'll notice a little bit of a drop as well. That was the first year that we introduced junior Jump Start for 11th graders. So we saw a little bit of a drop there, but we rebounded again beautifully, again, to have 299 students this year, taking over 570 tests. So this, you might ask then, how are your students doing? Because quite often, when you see a significant increase in the number of students enrolling in AP, and the number of tests that they're taking, you will see a drop in scores at Carson High, that has not happened, which we're very excited about. So this graph shows you in navy blue, Carson High School's total percent of AP students scoring a three or higher on their AP tests compared to the state of Nevada and globally. So in 2013, 73% of our students scored a three or higher on their test compared to 52% in Nevada and 61 globally, all the way over to 2017. In addition to adding almost 200 AP tests to our roster of testing, 75% of our students scored a three or higher on that correlating test compared to 52% for the state and 60% globally. So we opened our doors and challenged our students to take the most rigorous courses we had to offer, and challenged our teachers to take students who wouldn't traditionally take AP, and bring them up, and make sure that they were college-prepared or doing college-level coursework and being prepared for that test. And they rose to that challenge. On this graph, you, it actually just goes into the raw numbers in case you wanted to see regarding how many students and tests are given at the state and at the global level, as well as Carson High. So this is how they came up with the percentages. You have that in your packet, so we'll go with that. Last year, in 2016, 17, we added one new AP course, that was AP Environmental Science, very exciting first year, 36 students took that class and took that test, 30 of them received a score of three or better, so go Mr. Roselip on that, he rocked it his first year out. This year, we added AP Art History, we have 22 students taking that course, AP Computer Science, 26 students in that, AP Music Theory, 14 students there, and AP Statistics with 11 students in that course. The one thing I want to say about AP Stats, that's a senior class, in addition to AP Stats, we also offer Calculus AB and Calc BC. We have three full classes of calculus, which is huge. So we actually have four senior AP courses in math. Now, let's take a look at Jump Start. So I know we've had several conversations over the past couple of years about the Jump Start program and how that's growing and succeeding. So in its first year, in 2014, 15, we had 23 seniors that enrolled, because it was only a one-year program then. At the end of the year, we had 22 students, so we only lost one at the end of the semester. The second year, we had 67 students, again, that was seniors, and in the spring, we had 62 completed, and last year, we had 89. So if you remember, that's between seniors and juniors, so 89 with 95 in the spring. So you might ask yourself, how come we now have more kids in the spring than we had in the fall? That's because we actually looked to expand also into what we call Track D, which is nighttime-type courses that kids can take, and in this case, it was phlebotomy. So they were able to enroll in phlebotomy and get their certification. This year, we have certified nursing assistance classes going on as well. So the one underneath it shows you what, how they did in terms of academics. We have approximately, between a 90 to a 95% pass rate on all those courses, so that just breaks it down for you to show you exactly how many students pass their courses and receive credit. Significantly higher than what the college's pass rate is, that's Mr. Kankila loves to tell us that all the time as well.
Yeah, and I'd just like to add that at Pioneer, the flexibility that WNC has given us has been incredible. One, to help change the climate to being college-ready, and, you know, many of these kids, when they come in, college is the last thing on their mind, and they see this program working, and that opportunity for us to pay for them to get into a class, and they go for it. And the college has been able to give us, you know, some of our kids aren't qualified necessarily to do all the subject areas, but they'll say, we can get them into an English class, or we can get them into the history, and they've been very flexible to do that, and it's been very successful. Our numbers are obviously much smaller, but our percentages is about the same, and our success rate is pretty good. I think we had, on two years, 100% success for passing rate. So this year, we currently have four students. So this year, we currently have four students in. And then that semester, I have two students planning to get in. So we'll have six, as far as we know, at this time.
And not to mention that you had an AA degree come out of this program.
Yeah, so Pioneer does have the first AA student. And yes, we're all very proud of him, and he did a great job.
Thank you.
Okay, so from last year to this year, this slide shows you that last year at Carson High, we had 39 seniors that started the school year, 36 completed both semesters. We had 19 Track A juniors, so that's first-year 11th grader, 18 completed both semesters, and we had 17 students in Track C. So between AIT, which is manufacturing, construction, and auto. This year, we have 41 Track A first-year seniors. We have 18 second-year seniors, so those are students that will... should receive their AA degree by the end of this year. We have 22 Track A juniors, so those are the 11th graders on our campus taking those courses, and six Track C seniors. So you might ask, why has Track C kind of declined? We actually had about the same number of students, but they canceled their construction program for our kiddos this year. So that had about seven of our kids, eight of our kids, that weren't able to take that. But we've been working with them, again, to expand those night opportunities for our students. So this does not include, for instance, the students who will be doing the phlebotomy and the certified nursing assistant program. Okay, so actually, before she goes to closing remarks, the one thing I want to point out to you that it didn't dawn on me until I was sitting here and kind of preparing myself to come up here is that when you look holistically back five years ago, so going back to AP by itself, we had... I like this one better. There you go. We had 213 students in 2014 taking 369 tests. We now have 570 AP tests, but we also have about 90 students taking 10 courses apiece per year in Jump Start at college. So that's equivalent to 900 AP tests, if you count it that way, for Jump Start. You add that 900 to that 570, that's 1,470 college courses that our students are taking while they're in high school compared to, five years ago, 369. Now, I think that's significant in terms of our growth and our celebration. So while our ACT scores might not be where we want them to be, I think we are proving that by the time our students graduate for us, from us, we are definitely preparing them to be successful in the college environment, as is proof by their taking college-level coursework while they're in high school. So I'm particularly proud of this for our staff.
Tasha.
Yes, sir.
No, I think this is amazing, what you've done, or what Carson High... And Pioneer. I mean, this is... This is a great direction that we're going in and we're heading with just some outstanding results for these kids. And I like how you closed with, had the Jump Start kids been in the AP program, it would have been even higher in terms of, you know, academically, we're off the scale.
We are absolutely off the charts.
And what you presented, not only in the state of Nevada, but globally, that is something to be very proud of, and you should be very proud of yourself and Jason. I mean, this is... This is great.
And I think we just... We have an absolutely phenomenal staff, and I... This is the most talented staff I've ever had the honor and pleasure of working with. I'm going to be honest with you. I was just saying to one of my vice principals, Gavin Ward, today, I already have 10 teachers who've asked me to go to Summer Institute, Abbott Summer Institute this summer because we've been doing some little mini PD trainings with our staff during faculty meetings and professional development days. I'm going to tell you, I've been at two other schools where I had to beg people, teachers, to go to trainings and beg them to bring something new in our classrooms. And this staff, the staff I have at Carson High, they're begging me to send them and let them access those trainings, those outside resources. They are enthusiastic and jazzed, and they believe in kids, and they're willing to do things that would be considered non-traditional, and I am just very lucky. We are very, very lucky that we have the teaching staff that we have in our city. So I want to give them kudos for that.
I just want to say, I'm glad you brought up that correlation with ACT and the fact that despite our struggles there... Because I've been saying this for years, even though I get frustrated with why we don't do better on some of these tests, I've consistently said, these kids that I track that go on to college, whether it's WNC, whether it's, you know, wherever they go, Washington State, throughout the country, they're doing very well.
Absolutely.
You know, just because people here in Nevada's ranked where they're ranked doesn't mean these kids are coming into classes and they're ranked at the bottom of the classes. They're not just competing, but they're excelling. And so it's important to make sure that while we struggle in areas, we really have some huge successes.
Absolutely.
And again, it's a credit to everybody in the schools. You know, you, the teachers, the staff, everybody. So the same with Pioneer. And the other thing I just wanted to add was, looking at the numbers, when we were really kind of first getting into Jump Start, the obvious question came up, you know, now we have all these kids competing, AP is now competing against Jump Start, and what we're seeing is there's room for everybody, and both programs are thriving.
Absolutely.
So we have a spot for everybody, and I think it's just going to help our numbers and our successes continue to go up. So, thank you.
Thank you.
So kind of looking at that, when we had the big auto discussion and stuff because auto class was being dropped, and then WNC was going to pick it up in this aspect, correct?
Correct.
So have we lost? I noticed we only had, like, five. So did those kids that were interested in that go somewhere else, or...
I think we're seeing a lot of them morphing over into engineering, yeah, engineering and in manufacturing. A lot of our students don't want to leave our campus. Honestly, that's what it comes down to. And they're just looking for avenues that can prepare them for a highly skilled career upon leaving high school. So that not being an avenue, having engineering and manufacturing there, both very hands-on-type curriculum for students, so students who have that tactile, I want to be, you know, messing with those really cool machines that we have in engineering and manufacturing that calls to them. So I think most of our students have moved over from auto into those programs because we do provide busing. It is during the school day if they choose to take it at WNC, so it's easy to access, and it doesn't cost them anything, but we just don't have students who've expressed that interest.
And then I guess the other thing is, AJ, how much does our... Because of the rise in numbers, how much is Jump Start costing us? And then, Mr. Stokes, maybe you can let us know how much it costs the parents going this route?
So I think if you go back, the first year we had it running, I think it was just under $100,000. Now, it's around $260,000 that we're paying to WNC for that program.
And how much is covered, if any? How does a grant pay, you know? How does a grant play into this whole thing? Because I know parents, you know, when we talk about how much it's costing, it's not costing the parents right now, I don't want to say across the board, but it might be the case, it's not costing them anything.
Right. It's covered 100% by the College and Career Readiness Grant at this point.
So currently, our families and our students aren't paying anything for the college courses. We pay for their textbooks as well. And then again, our district provides transportation for those students who need that as well. So currently, we've been fortunate to have that grant, and it's not been an expense to our families.
And I just wanted everybody to know that, that Jump Start doesn't cost anything, and that, I mean, that would have saved me thousands of dollars. Thousands of dollars if it had been a couple of years earlier. So I think it's real important for people to understand that they are college courses, but that there is no financial burden on these families.
And if I could take a second to then pitch also Nevada Promise Scholarship, because that is an exciting opportunity for our student body that they can apply for, again, continuing their education and having that paid for from the Nevada Promise Scholarship. So as long as they're a student in good standing and they're enrolled at the college. So any of our, for instance, seniors last year who took Jump Start classes, who are continuing at Western Nevada for their AA degree, are eligible to apply for that scholarship, and that funding's out there so that they can continue that. It's very exciting.
I have one addition, just for the board's information, that WNC pays us for the section that each of our teachers teach for Jump Start. So for that period, WNC pays part of the salary for the teacher.
So what teachers do we have that are teaching?
So we currently have Mr. Macy, who teaches the English 101 and 102 class, and then Mr. Mobley, who's teaching a COM 101 and 102 class. And the other, for the junior class, the other three teachers come in from the college.
And just an estimate for AP. This isn't... This is for 2016 data for advanced placement. Those students that scored a three, four, or five, if those students... We know that there's variations of acceptance as far as credit. Sometimes it's placement, sometimes it's just credit to credit at universities. But if they were, all the credits were accepted, that would have been about $220,330.11 savings to those families.
And then have we figured... I know when we first started the AP and the Jump Start, we had some confusion about grade point and how that worked. Have we...
Yes.
Has that been made clear to the parents, or we've worked out the bugs?
We have. And what that is, is that any student who takes a college course that is transferable to a university, a four-year institution, receives a full credit per semester for that course and a .05 GPA bump, equivalent to what a GPA bump is for an AP course. The reason why I say that is because we have several students who are taking courses at WNC that are certificate-of-warning courses, and they're not transferable to a four-year university. For those courses, students receive a .025, the same as an honors course. It's still college coursework, but it's not a transferable course that gets them the four-year credit. So that's the agreement that we came up with in our committee to how to try to make that a little bit equitable. In addition to that, this year, we will have a Jump Start valedictorian and Jump Start salutatorian, separate from our school-wide val and sal. And the reason why we did that is because with the number of courses that our juniors then becoming seniors this year will be taking with that AP dual-credit GPA bump, there's no way a non-Jump Start student could compete with that GPA. So we will have a school val sal, we'll have a Jump Start val sal, and the valedictorian and salutatorian, and all students who earn that associate's degree will walk with the top 20, our traditional top 20, to lead the graduation processional in.
Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. Lots of good stuff happening. Let's go ahead and move to Agenda Item 11. Discussion on Possible Action to Approve the Portion of the Proposed Development Agreement Between the City of Carson City and the Developers of the Lompah Ranch North Specific Plan Area, Including Provisions for the Acquisition of a Parcel of Land, at Least 10 Acres in Size, Within the Lompah Ranch North Development, for Total Purchase Price Not to Exceed $2 Million, With Funding to Come From Agreed Upon School Impact Fee Expected to Produce $1,850,000, Such That the Net Cost of the Land to the Carson City School District Shall Not Exceed $150,000, To Be Paid From Future Capital Project Funds for Possible Action. Mr. Stokes and Mr. Feeling.
Thank you, President Crossman, members of the board. It'll be difficult to follow the last presentation, but I thank Mrs. Kima for putting that together. It was truly enlightening and happy to be part of that activity. If I could have you first, with regard to Item Number 11, go halfway down that very long agenda item and find the sentence that says, "For a total purchase price not to exceed $2 million, with funding to come from an agreed-upon school..." If you would cross out the word "impact" and add "donation fee." And I ask you to do that because this is a consideration that will benefit us in the long run. Impact fees really are not something that we can consider in a condition like this, but a donation fee says more precisely what we want it to say and will be part of our language later on in this document. So I'd like to let you know...
Just a quick question. Just because we are changing the language of the agenda item that's been agendized, does that bring any... Mr. Pavlakis, does it bring any concern for open meeting law that we're changing that language there?
I view it as a correction to the agenda. Ms. President, I think we're okay.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure on that. Thank you.
Thank you. So as you know, for some time, we've all been watching, those of us who have lived in Carson City, been watching what may happen with the Lompah Ranch. And as it became known that that particular property was about to be developed more fully, members of my team, along with Mr. Pavlakis, Mr. Feeling, Mr. Kornick, and Mr. Johnson, we became involved in discussions with the developer and also got involved with understanding more about what was about to happen with our folks at the city level. And over a period of time, we met and talked about our individual interests and what we were hoping to accomplish in terms of looking at the residential units that might be built on this location, and indeed, the impact that those added people and students would have on Carson City School District. So several rounds of negotiations and discussions occurred, and I believe that through that process, we were able to share with the developers the needs of the school district, and I believe that they came to understand our financial condition and position. Within that plan, there was a 10-acre plot that was specifically identified and set aside for school property. We were also told by our folks who were developing this land that the school district would be expected to buy this property at market value. And the numbers that we were given were between $2 million and $3.5 million. We, again, through negotiations, we let our friends from across the table know that we were not in that kind of a position. We didn't have that kind of money that we could expend toward this end. And what the developer was trying to do was to complete a development agreement, which is then an agreement that is brought before the Board of Supervisors, which, when passed, that would essentially drive this development to completion. And so anything that was determined early would impact the school one way or another. And so we wanted to make sure that we had the very best condition and situation that we possibly could manage. So we declined to pay for our market value for this property. And again, through our processes, we came up with a plan that the developers have agreed to, and that's what is before the trustees this evening. So fundamentally, this 10-acre lot will be available to the school district by the 30th of June 2019. And once we get to that point, and as the residential units begin being built, then the phase developers or those builders who are building the individual residential areas will begin to build roads, they'll add the utilities, all of those pieces that are part and necessary for us to be able to put a school within that development. The developer expects to be able to build 1,850 single and multifamily units. And as we planned forward, we figured that from those multifamily units, we could expect approximately 550 to 600 students, obviously not all representing elementary-age students, but students that would impact our system. And so it was critical that we have space there on which we could put a school. So the functional part of this plan is that the city will collect a school donation fee of $1,000 per unit from the phase developers. So if you multiply the $1,000 by the 1,850... So if you multiply the $1,000 by the 1,850 single and family units, that will raise the equivalent of $1,850,000. So that money would be available, given to the school, for us to pay against the set price for this piece of land at $2 million. So if you take the $2 million, subtract it from the amount that we expect to receive from the phase developers of $1.85 million, then there's a difference of $150,000 that's left over. And so it's that $150,000 that, over time, we would owe the total amount that would be the school district's obligation for this 10 acres. So essentially, we're able to buy 10 acres of property within this very desirable location at the cost of $150,000. So the work effort was worth it. And again, my thanks to our team members who collectively came together, came up with this concept, and it was accepted by our folks at Blackstone. So I'm hoping that if you have any questions, we can discuss those here tonight. Certainly have those folks here with me that were part of these negotiations that can contribute. And obviously, we're seeking your approval. As we move forward, the developer will be presenting this portion, well, actually, their entire development agreement, but this portion, as it applies to the schools, will be part of that agreement at the Board of Supervisors meeting on October 19th. And I know that I plan to be there to be able to endorse, if it's, if our plans are approved by the trustees tonight, endorse this agreement going forward. Any questions for me?
Do we have any questions?
All right. You said, at build-out, there would be 1,850 single-family?
And multi.
And multi.
Multi-family. And multi, so that includes the apartments, condominiums, townhouses, that's?
Included in that plan.
And the projection, projected build-out of this is when?
Between eight to 10 years.
Okay, eight to 10 years, but we would, you know, at some point, early on, I think, what, after 700 units or whatever, then we would essentially enter into a sales agreement? I mean, this is, but I mean, we go to that next step that goes into escrow at that time, or what?
AJ, you want to address those?
So at the point that we decide to acquire, I'm sorry, AJ Feeling for the record, acquire the land, at that point, whatever fees have been collected at that point is essentially what is our obligation to pay for that land at that point. So we would receive deed in turning that amount over. In the years to follow, then, whatever additional fees are collected, we would be required to pay those to Blackstone over time, up until the point of receiving the $1.85 million. Somewhere within that timeframe, we would have to come up with our $150,000 as well. It's not defined as to when that must occur, or within 10 years, right? Yeah. But so we have some flexibility with that, which is great for us, just considering the circumstances that may appear at that point. If any fees are collected above and beyond $1.85 million, so if, for example, with real estate prices, if the developers decide to try to squeeze out some more units, whatever fees are collected above and beyond that, stay with the district. So it would be monies that we could put towards the whatever school construction that we do in that area.
Then, you know, with the agreement, you know, we talk about, you know, acquiring a land, specifically for an elementary school. What if we don't need an elementary school, but we need a middle school?
Is it specific to elementary school, or is it just a school site?
It says elementary school.
Okay.
Three A, four sentences down. Purpose of acquiring 10 acres of elementary school site within planned area.
I would suggest that we modify that, because you're right. And we've talked less about an elementary school in recent times and more about a school, for the very reason that you have identified.
Yeah, in one iteration here, we had defined the school site as K through eight, and we took that out and left it. Is the word ele, where are you seeing the word "elementary"?
It's at about halfway through Page 2.
Three A.
In three A, right after 10 acre.
And just going through, I'm seeing it just as a school site other than there, so maybe just that elementary was missed in deleting that.
Yes, we, hopefully, I don't believe that there would be a problem in deleting that word, but we'll have to confirm that with the developer.
And one other change that's right there, close by, there's a typo. The last, second to the last sentence, "In the event the school site is appraised," blah, blah, then it says, "Increase in value to CCSD to the out-of-pocket cost." So it says there, we would scratch there and add "the." I was just curious, is 10 acres enough for a middle school? I was just curious. You know, we're at an interesting place in our evolution. The school district has other property in the city. And so I think being able to come together, again, with our master plan committee and talk about what's needed and what's appropriate, even though we have some land, there might be complications to building at any of those sites. And so 10 acres is what's been allotted in this agreement, and that's what we're going to be working towards. The nice thing about that area is there will be a park in close proximity. I mean, there's some variety of things that we might be able to enter into the discussion as those plans become more solid.
I was just going to say, it's also located close to the high school. If you're talking fields and that sort of thing, there would be that access.
Yeah, I'm thinking it would be adjacent, or it would be connected.
It is. It's directly to the east of the Carson High School athletic complex.
Just piggybacking on that, do you think that that's going to be a problem traffic-wise and stuff, having a middle school and a high school in the same place? And we're moving the bus stops, too?
It's what we have. I think it'll be okay. Obviously, there's a plan that has already been approved with showing roads that are to be built. And they've done traffic studies, and at certain points in time, when the population in that area rises to a certain degree, then more roads are to be built with more access points. And so, yeah, there's some of that that we just don't know. But what is for certain with this process is that 10 acres will be reserved for Carson City School District.
I'd like to say again, thank you, and excellent job to all of you guys, probably even more, to that road. From talking to a couple of different supervisors, there's still, this group has not been super easy to deal with, and so I think you all are winning the game. And there's supposed to be some more roads even on that schematic that are, haven't even been decided yet. And so, great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions?
Just following through on that, we get the 10 acres, and we decide if we're making a middle school or an elementary. Are we going to have the bonding capability by then to be able to bond for it?
I was just going to ask. I forgot about that conveniently. Thank you. I was just going to tap Mr. Stokes on the shoulder and ask if I could come up and just make a quick final statement, and it's exactly related to that, trustee Wilkie. So the middle schools that, at this same meeting that Washo are looking at, they're now upward, getting into the 60 to 70 million-dollar range, if you're looking at a new middle school. They're at spec on that. I forget the exact number of students, but it's more like closer to the thousand side for a middle school. So it depends on how, so much of this comes down to square footage and then the programming, and so depending on how many kids, that's going to impact the cost. But this whole process, which has been a pretty intense process, but has really, for me, put a laser focus on the fact that we, while we clearly have 20 to 25 million in bonding capacity coming up here in the next couple of years, which will help us towards the direction we want to go, we have a real problem, and it's not just Carson City. This is statewide, as far as capital funding for districts in the state of Nevada. Washo, which was kind of crying a foul with what they had available to them, and they were able to pass this WC-1 sales tax, which is helping them immensely, and they're buying and building like crazy now. Clark County has their room taxes that they get a lot of money for. Clark County doesn't have any issues with funding capital projects. But the rest of us that don't have significant net proceeds from minerals, we're in really a tough spot. And some of it, or I feel like a lot of it goes back to the changes with property tax abatements. So when you have essentially a cap on how much revenue you can generate at 3%, which is great for taxpayers, but the reality is that that revenue stream is locked, hopefully at 3% if you get that. And yet, real property prices and construction prices are going up 5 to 10. On average, if that's true over a long period of time, we are going to lose. And so I just say that is to, I think we really, in the long run, are going to have to talk about what else can become available to school districts that don't have some of these other options to fund some of these projects. And I was talking with the CFO from White Pine County, and they have two schools that are over 100 years old. And there is no way, with their property tax base, they could ever build a new school. It is impossible. So, you know, I feel like there should be some other option. I don't know what that is, but I think it's just a conversation that's going to have to continue, especially into the next legislative session.
Do we have any other questions?
Madam President, members of the board, I would just ask that when you do feel like you're ready to make a motion, we also need to change one word in the motion that's provided, again, by crossing out "impact," or we just want to refer to this money that's available as a school donation fee.
I'll try a motion.
Go right ahead.
I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees approve the proposed language of Section 2.6 of the Development Agreement between the City of Carson City and the developers of the Lampa Ranch North Specific Plan Area, including provisions for the acquisition of a parcel of land at least 10 acres in size within the Lampa Ranch North Development, for a total purchase price not to exceed $2 million, with funding to come from an agreed-upon school donation fee, expected to produce $1,850,000, such that the net cost of the land to the Carson City School District shall not exceed $150,000, to be paid from future capital project funds. And the superintendent and legal counsel are authorized to execute documents and support the approval of Section 2.6 by the Board of Supervisors of Carson City.
Okay. Motion by trustee Karina, Karini, seconded by trustee Cassioppo. Do we have any further discussion? Go ahead.
Let's go back to the use of word "donation." Is it, does the Board of Supervisors approve, is part of the condition of moving forward that we are imposing that donate, are requesting the donation, or are they? Or is it that the developer has agreed with us to do this? How does that legally work, and is there any legal problem with this?
The, thank you. The use of the word "donation" is important because there is a Douglas County, the Nevada Supreme Court case, that upheld that there is no provision in Nevada law that allows for a school district to collect an impact fee. The development agreement process is a process pursuant to which a developer negotiates with the city, and enters into an agreement with the city to address certain issues. One of the issues, fire, parks, things of that nature, are part of the development agreement. There was a paragraph in the development agreement that just talked about schools. And when the school district expressed a concern about what was contained in that paragraph initially, the city asked Mr. Stokes to have discussions directly with the developer over the provisions that could be included in the development agreement. The shorter answer to your question is that the agreement is between the developer and the city, and if the Board of Supervisors approves the development agreement, this will have the full force and effect of a statutory agreement between the developer and the city, of which we are a third-party beneficiary.
Do we have any further questions? Do we have any public comment? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Madam President, if I could just add one little bit of information here. This development agreement applies to anybody affiliated with this project. And so even if one phase developer were to sell out to another one, this document would apply to all of those individuals. And so it's far-reaching and puts us in a good place.
Thank you. Agenda Item 12, Approval of Consent Agenda for Possible Action.
I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion by trustee Cassioppo, second by trustee Green. Do we have any further discussion?
I have a pecuniary interest in one of the things on the payroll warrant, so I will not be voting on this item.
Trustee Wilkie will be abstaining. Do we have any further discussion or questions? Any public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion is approved. I'll go to Agenda Item 13, Informational Items for Discussion Only, No Action Will Be Taken. Does anyone have any comments on informational items, other than the fact that daylight savings time does not end until November 5th, and it seems like it gets further and further away every single year? Okay, we'll go ahead and move to Agenda Item 14, Request for Future Agenda Topics. Do we have any requests for future agenda topics? Joe?
I would just, Sue, when it's appropriate, meaning when it's
I would just, Sue, when it's appropriate, meaning when it fits in other agenda topics, somebody who is presenting brought up the fact that, like, a practice ACT for sophomores. I'd like to know more about how that might work, if it could work, you know, what the pros and cons of that would be. It just seems like a good idea.
So we have a planning, I looked it up, it's November 3rd that we have our planning meeting. So I don't know if it'll be the first board meeting or the second board meeting in November. We're going to come to the board with a plan. That's been discussed at the last high school, school sport team meeting, and I'm sure on Friday it might be discussed a little bit more. But then I've got a middle school and high school group meeting in the beginning of November to talk about those kinds of moves, big moves.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, she made a good point about the practice the kids have on unlimited time versus a timed test. And that was, I thought that was very interesting, as far as the issue with the scores.
It's a big shocker to even our advanced kids to have the luxury of time and then not have the luxury of time.
Do we have any other requests?
Yeah, I just want to follow up on things I requested before at a meeting in October, having the learner center model presented by Dr. Berdare, and that dealt with the partnership between the teacher and the students using the learning guides. And to have representatives, teachers, students from the high school and both middle schools to walk us through from the perspective of the teachers and the students, is it working? And could it be made better? Okay, that was one. And then the, at the first meeting, was supposed to be today, was the funding source for the social workers. So hopefully, maybe next meeting, we could continue with that.
Do we have any other? Oh, Brian?
Yeah. I'd like a topic, some of the emails we got lately, and then some folks I've talked to, including Lashar. Looking at each elementary school has a little bit different schedule based on the necessity of their site and stuff. But going over the schedules with administrators and teachers, I think it would be really valuable for us to have it explained what all of the expectations of a teacher are throughout the day, and what their tasks are, they're supposed to do, how much time they're supposed to teach, grading and lesson planning, and can it be accomplished in contract hours? Is this a possibility? Because when I sit down with them, it can't. And quite frankly, I think that's immoral, and illegal. We're asking them to work for free. So, you know, I know we don't control a lot of this. Some of these things are things they're handed out from the state on the federal level. But we can absolutely at least make a fuss or do something. But I think we need to have an understanding of it first. And so I would like a topic to just explain that schedule and how it works, especially from site to site, because there's differentiation. And then also, I think within that, a really important distinction that I wasn't aware of till recently, but with how our semesters work, trying to squeeze them in by Christmas, the one is less than the other, and then it's even worse, the quarters, the number of days in the quarters. And I'm wondering, and this is, I don't know, maybe this is a question y'all can just answer within that, or send me an email, but seems to me, we could, at least from talking to folks at secondary and primary, it's mostly based on secondary's needs. Is it possible that the primaries could go back to ending their first semester after Christmas? Because a lot of this crunch that some of these teachers seem to be feeling is that they can't, in this first quarter, is drastically shorter than some of the others. They just can't get everything done by the time that quarter's over. And so that seems like something that's really simple. We just, we decide when that is. So I think it would be valuable to understand at least either why it needs to be like it is, or if that's something we can explore doing.
So one more thing. At one of the NASME meetings we had, we went and had a discussion about superintendent evaluations. And it was really interesting to Mike and I that only us and Lyon do our evaluations the way that we do, in the out, everybody making a comment. And anyway, they're the only two that have that same procedure, where there's 15 other counties that have a procedure that's not quite as derogatory, for lack of a better word, this late at night, but seemed to be a smoother process with a lot more input than we do. And so I kind of wanted to go and evaluate and see if we could change our evaluation to do, not the form, but the way that we handle the evaluation. And I can help you, Mr. Stokes, with that, to figure out how we want, me and Mike would like to work with you to see if we could work on a different way to actually do these evaluations, so that they're not so, I don't know, so that they're more constructive, I think is for a better word. Yeah, so, and I know we usually have that in November, but because we did the contract thing, I don't know, is it still November, or is it backing up till January or March? I think, because we've done it at different times, too. So maybe we need to look and see when your evaluation would actually be, too.
I'd have to go back and check the contract, but I was assuming it would still be before the end of the current calendar year.
I don't remember any changes in the contract to the evaluation time.
So that's what I'd like to do. I know it's kind of a hurried schedule, but I'm not talking about changing any of the forms. I'm just like to change the process. So if we have time, I guess it'll have to be either on the first November meeting, or if we have time in the next meeting to come up with something. And I'll try to meet with you before then, so that we could at least get a different kind of process, and I can kind of fill in on what other people have been doing.
If during your research, you can isolate a meeting, because I'm sure everybody's meetings are online, I'd go watch, or I'd watch the other board meetings to see how it goes, if you know of some.
Okay, that was one of the things I wanted to bring up, is that we do need to get the superintendent's evaluation and that scheduled. And the other thing is, just to consider for future agenda topic, if you're interested, the second board meeting in December falls on December 26th, and that may be a consideration. Sometimes we cancel meetings when they fall over holidays, so that would be something for future consideration.
Especially for staff.
Okay, if there are no other requests for future agenda topics at this time, we'll go ahead to Agenda Item 15 and adjourn. This meeting's now adjourned.